Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome tonight. We have a very special presentation swearing in Sergeant Brian Rose. And I think we can start that right now. Yes, Judge? Chief? Sergeant Rose, will you step forward, please? Your Honor? And someone can hold that for you, whoever you choose.
Raise your left hand on by, or raise your right hand. I, Brian R. Rose, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and ordinances of Doylestown Township against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap, or disability. I, Brian R. Rose, do further solemnly swear that I take this obligation freely without mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will and faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant of Police with fidelity.
Chief, you want to talk about Sergeant Rose here? What's going on with our new hierarchy?
Sergeant Rose started working for us back in 1989. I think he was one of two people hired that year. Three people hired that year. He worked his way up, became a corporal. He's served on our special response team since its inception. He graciously stepped down when he took the oath of Sergeant here tonight. He's here with his wife Cheryl and his son Adam, and they live here in the township. I'm proud to have him as the next Sergeant in Doylestown.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome. We're very pleased. Board pictures, sir? I don't have any shoes.
You don't have any shoes?
Board pictures.
Don't take from the leaded.
Get your ops here, boys. Get your ops out here. You don't want any ops?
Are we all going up?
is being served, or whatever.
Come up, everybody.
Just cake, sorry.
Like the camera.
Just cake and juice and cookies.
Is that mine or yours?
Judge Dico, you want to join us?
He got them over here on my stuff. I said, hey, man, I'll keep it.
Are you good?
I need money.
Good.
I'll take it.
Lieutenant.
Thank you, everybody.
Sunset going there.
Any family members or missing people who want to get in a shot?
I hope you had a fun time.
That's good.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
And going.
How's Dad doing?
I'm great.
Good.
Okay.
Back to business. Although that was fun business. Presentations from Conestoga Rover. Thank you for coming tonight, gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. This presentation is on the Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Program. It's part of the EPA's required program for stormwater. As you can see, we've done previous presentations dating back to '06. Last year's presentation is available on the website, the township website. Again, my name is Rich Burns. I'm from Conestoga Rovers and Associates. And Russ Maholick is here. He does the actual field sampling and inspections. The agenda tonight, this will really be five, 10 minutes at the most. We'll go over the current status of the program. We'll discuss the inspections that occurred and go over the sampling results. Then we'll go over what we're going to do for next year's program. Takeaways from the ADD program. Any questions to answer, questions, Q and A session at the end. The current status of the program. We're in year nine of the program, very mature program. Doylestown's been doing it since the beginning. We're in contact with DEP every year when we submit our reports. Russ spoke to the DEP case manager just last month, and you can see there, they're very pleased at how the township has been proactive with their program. The township also submitted an application to extend this permit out to March 2018. Couple photographs here. We show this one every year. Basically, this is what we go out and do, dry weather inspections of outfalls. These are structures that convey stormwater throughout the township. The township owns these and is responsible for these. The one on the right, you can see is dry. The one on the left has some flow, even after 72 hours of no precipitation. We go out and inspect them, whether they're flow or not. And if there is flow, we collect the sample and submit it for fecal coliform analysis. This is a diagram of the township, and we just arbitrarily divide it up into three sections, three areas. Area one on the bottom, area two on the right, and area three on the upper left. And I'll just go back real quick. And this year, we focused on area two, up in the upper right here. The results of the inspections. We focused all of our inspections on area two in 2012. We also completed sampling there. In addition to that, what we did is we went back to area one, which we did last year, to repeat some hotspot sampling, meaning we got an elevated result of fecal coliform. The sample analysis for fecal coliform in area two, we had 36 samples. In area one, we collected 12 samples. We collected detergents at one location in area two. That's where we see actual SUDs that may be indicative of connection of somebody's washing machine with SUDs, so we collected detergents as well. We collect all that data, we send it out to a lab, get it back and review it, and we compile it for the presentation and also a report that goes out every year in June. In addition, we did detailed mapping of area two. And what I mean by that is, we're required now by EPA to actually go out and follow all the lines of all the storm basins, flow directions, where they outflow to, what kind of stream, what townships they may eventually flow into as well. We prepare a detailed CAD map, which you saw on the previous page, and we submit a report every year to DEP. This is what we do, detailed mapping. You can see the area, area two, up here. And this is just a snapshot of that detailed mapping. You can see a lot of colors there, green flow arrows and blue with flow arrows. They're telling us which way the flow is going. What does green mean?
Green is the actual flow, the outfalls. The blue should be streams.
Okay. So that's all the detail. So that really adds up, covering even just one-third of the township at one time. That's a lot of detail to add to the map. And the results of area two sampling, like I said before, we sampled at 36.
What is the addresses of area two? What is the location?
The boundaries?
Goes up Sugar Bottom Road, goes out to, is that Rogers Road over there? And then cuts back down kind of along 202 to where 202 intersects with 611 down here.
Guys, it corresponds with our septic management cycle, so if you're in Cycle Two, septic management-wise, with that neighborhood, if you understand.
Yep, that's a good point. We collected 36 samples at 33 outfalls. And what that means is, at three locations, we sampled twice. We came back, usually because we had an elevated fecal coliform result during the first sample event. 15 samples at 14 locations had fecal coliform greater than 200 colonies per 100 milliliters, which is just really kind of a standard benchmark DEP has, although the drinking water standard is one. The maximum detection was greater than 6,000 colonies, which means the laboratory couldn't count any higher, so they just reported as greater than 6,000. Here's a map showing the sample results. And we're not showing all sample locations, but what we are showing is the green dots are detections where the lab result was greater than 200. And you can see they're scattered out throughout the township. One result, the red, was down at the bottom. That was greater than 6,000. However, because that was elevated, we did repeat that sampling months later, in October, and the second result was less than 100. And that is in a primarily sewered area. So that was kind of unexpected, and it didn't repeat, so that just seems to be a one-off, but we'll continue to hit that again next year. To summarize the results for area two for 2012, again, the fecal coliform levels are elevated in certain sections of area two, pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past. Area one, where we went back and did some hotspot sampling, repeated that, it's still elevated in those hotspot areas as well. But the results didn't increase as we thought they may have, because we were in the third year of the septic cleanout, pump-out schedule. So that's a good thing. Going forward, we're going to do a complete round of inspections and sampling at area three. In addition, we'll do that detailed mapping of area three for the EPA requirements. We'll continue to go back to the other two sections, areas one and two, for just detailed hotspot sampling. If necessary, we'll do additional source investigations, which in the past have included dye tracing down storm drains and TV inspections of storm drains as well. We'll mitigate any sources if they're identified and if necessary. Takeaways, these really haven't changed from previous presentations in the past. Township is in compliance, and we continue to do all the tests that are outlined in the permit. Again, it's up to the people to do proper septic system maintenance. That really helps out. Public participation and pollution prevention. And I would just note that on the township's website, they do have a hotline, stormwater hotline, if anybody sees anything unusual in the creeks, you know, anything that shouldn't be there, anything's being poured down a creek or a storm basin which will lead to a creek. So the overall goal is to improve water quality in the township.
Any questions from the board? Public questions? Sir, would you please come up to the microphone and identify yourself and your address?
My name is Kevin Green. I'm in area two. So I'm just curious, are there any direct correlations to why there are certain areas that are greater than 200? Is it related directly to mismanagement of people's septic? Or is this kind of within a normal kind of distribution, acceptable? Or are there any type of remediation recommendations? Thank you.
Good question. Well, we continue to collect data and look for any trends. I know of one hotspot that we detected, that we didn't detect, I guess it was an illegal hookup.
Right, it was through dye tracing.
Through dye tracing. But that's the only one so far. A lot of times where we get a greater than 6,000, it doesn't always repeat. And what we try to do is we do upstream. We keep going up to the furthest point possible. And part of that will lead to like a part of a neighborhood, and that's where we've tried to go door-to-door to do dye tracing of individual septic systems. That's, I think, believed still in the process to complete that, to narrow it down. But basically, we're looking for those real hotspots where the numbers are greater, you know, in thousands, fecal coliform.
So it's acceptable range that's greater than 200?
I wouldn't say it's acceptable, but that's just a generic number that the DEP uses. But, I mean, we keep sampling and we keep looking for sources.
The 200 is what a sewage treatment plant is allowed to discharge after they've treated the sewage. So that's the number that, you know, the state has pretty much held us to here. Anything above 200, we try to locate the source of it by tracing the flow upstream and collecting samples along the way. Most of the time, it doesn't work, because it's a break in a pipe or something where water's getting in and we can't tell quite which house it's coming from. But in the case of the one we did find, we were able, through the TV, actually camera, find where a pipe was coming out of a house. We got permission from the owner to dye trace. We poured some dye in the toilet, flushed it a couple times, and sure enough, in the storm basin there, we saw the dye coming out. So then it got turned over to the Health Department, who followed up with the homeowner. And I can tell you, this year, when we sampled there, it was down to 300, which is still slightly elevated, but we were getting numbers as high as greater than 600,000 from the raw sewage that was coming out. So I expect, as we continue to sample that through the years or whatever, to see the numbers continue to drop down as the ground around there is flushing itself clean again.
Can you hear? I think you need to come to the microphone. They'll yell at me back there if you're not.
Would there be any further action on the township's? Is the township responsible then for kind of pursuing this to the primary suspect? Or is there any further action that normally would occur with a situation like this?
Normally, send, when we can determine there's a septic system issue, to the Board of Health, who has jurisdiction over that. So we're investigatory and reporting, but we don't take action against persons with failed systems. It goes to the Board of Health.
Is the Board of Health allowed to take action or something like that?
We're not. They are.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Steve Pierce, Doveron Road. My question had a deal, I said you had about 36 samples, and it looked like a lot of them might be stormwater draining from multiple properties. And you just commented, you kind of track it back to see where it might be coming from, if you have a high. I was wondering on, and I don't know if it's in your scope of work, you discharge waters that leave the township, that go to the next township. Do you sample it all there to see what the net result of all the runoff from the township is, leaving here and going somewhere else? Is that in your scope of work, or do you just look at the smaller ones?
No, it's not in the scope or the permit requirement. We probably have some locations that are pretty close to the township boundaries, but it's not a requirement at that specific location.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, guys. See you again soon.
Thanks.
Any visitors or public comment? All right, seeing none or hearing none? The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, March 5, 2013. I also like to announce, and Sean will talk about this in a little bit, further detail, that on February 28, 2013, 7:00 PM, there'll be a Save the Kids Castle meeting at Lenape Middle School. Yes, sir? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, I would like to make a public comment? Sure. Okay. I'd like to make a public comment on behalf of the citizens opposed to the Pebble Ridge Sewer Committee. Can you please identify yourself? My name's Teresa Caro. I live at 45 Doveron Road. At the October 4 meeting, I addressed a question to the Board of Supervisors, asking why my property was added to the proposed Pebble Ridge area in 2010. And I was referred to speak to the Public Waters Sewer Advisory Committee. And after numerous communications with Ed Harvey, who's chair of that committee, he informed me that the expansion was recommended by the committee and approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2010, that my property on Doveron Road was never studied by the Boucher and James studies, where they looked at failing septic systems. We are still required to participate in the study. I did go back and I looked at the maps from Boucher and James and can see that not only were the properties on Doveron Road never studied, but many of the houses on the north side of Arms House Road, the west side of Old New Road, Militia Hill Road, and Forge Lane were never included in that study. And they are all on the map right now in the proposed study area. As our contention, there's no evidence to show that we are a source of contamination and a public health hazard. Many of us in our areas know that our systems and our soils drain very well. I have with me, and I have a copy for all of the Board of Supervisors, a petition that was signed by residents in those areas requesting that we be removed from the project. You want to hand that up now? Do you have a copy for the reporter? I do not. Well, I'll make sure she gets one. Thank you.
I do have one comment on that.
Thank you.
My understanding is, as the engineering progressed, that the pipe was going to have to be, and I don't know all the specifics of Doveron, but the pipe was going to have to be in the street in order to get to its sewage plant. Cannot put the pipe in the street and not offer it to the residents. So the fact that we had to put it in the street, that you have to have access to it, then obviously you have to pay your portion of it, because at some time you may make use of it. But that was the understanding I had from the Department of Health, was we can't just put a pipe in front of it and say you can never use it, and therefore you don't have to pay.
You say "offer to us." Why would you, why would we want to take advantage of something we have no need for?
And there is no evidence that our systems are failing. Let me try it again. The pipe has to go in your street. And since it's going in your street, you have to partake in the portion of the cost of it. We can't, the Department of Health can't allow the pipe to go past your house and not let you participate and not let you have access to it. It just won't let us do it.
We should not be required, we should not be required to pay for something that we don't need.
The fact that the pipe's going past your home, and again, I don't know all the houses, but the fact that the pipe is going down there, and there is some point in the future that you may need it, you have to pay for the participation now, even if you don't use it, just like some of the other residents may not need it for 20 years or 30 years, because they're having good sewage discharges. But that was my understanding. The pipe, if the engineering happened, the pipe had to go down your street, and therefore you had to be a participant. You're right, it didn't have anything to do with the Boucher and James study, to my understanding.
I'm correct. The Boucher and James study focused strictly on the Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge, but when we got into the feasibility study with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, it was now, okay, you know, you have sort of an area, and the pipes need to come to the Castle Valley and to other areas. And so that's when it was realized that the area needed to be expanded, because that's where the pipes were going. And as Mr. Calevo indicated, when the pipes are going down streets, you have to be able to offer it to everyone in that area. And that's why it got incorporated, and that's why you're part of this study at this point in time. So they need to, because they need to go near our properties to access the interceptor and other areas, we will be required to hook up, or we will be required to participate in the study and pay for the installation of the main, which is about $25,000 minimum. At this point, that is the way it's being laid out? Well, we disagree with that, and we feel that we should not be required, not only to pay for the main, but not be required to hook up. And I would request that the Board of Supervisors would take our request into consideration and respond to us at some point in the future. Thank you. We will. Any other comments? Okay. Where were we? Minutes' approval. Minutes' approval for February 5, 2013. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right before this meeting, we met to interview a gentleman from Voter District One for the Traffic Advisory Committee, Mr. Greg Coverdale. The board will now entertain a motion to appoint him to the Traffic Advisory Committee. Is there such a motion? I'd like to make a motion to appoint Greg Coverdale to the Traffic Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Unfortunately, we have received a resignation from Keith Peters from the EAC. It's attached to our packet, and I think we can't make him stay, because he has other things he has to do. So is there a motion to accept it?
Yes, I will make a motion with regrets. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With regret. We say yes.
With that, I would like to make an appointment to replace Mr. Peters with a gentleman by the name of Ray Hendricks, who is in the audience today. Ray has served as our botanist for, since 1995, I believe, and he's done a great job. He has a lot of talents, and I would make a motion that we appoint him to be chairman of the EAC.
You designate the chairperson.
Okay.
There's a second. All right.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ray, would you like to say something? He's now our new chairman of the EAC.
Talk about birds.
I would like to thank you very much for your vote of confidence. I will do my best, as I always try to do. And with the support of your staff, Stephanie and Sarah and everybody else, I look forward to the job.
Thank you. Thanks for willing to serve. I just want the board to know that we did receive the, I want to call it the bird book, but we did receive that today. We have it here in our library. So. Thank you. For your contribution to that as well. The bird book Mr. Hendricks put together. So.
And many other things.
We have a request to waive fees for the VIA designer house. It's been presented, it fits within our policy. Is there a motion to approve?
Go for approval.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any questions? The waiver is for $200 for the designer house fundraiser. Is that correct?
Yes.
A total of 200. And I see Mrs. Cunningham is here, and let me, you have a question before I call the motion?
But you answered the question.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Okay. Reports from the solicitor.
I have left a report that we won't discuss later in the agenda.
Chief?
I have three traffic-related items I'd like to address the board. The first is related to a Ray has served as our botanist for, since 1995, I believe, and he's done a great job. He has a lot of talents, and I would make a motion that we appoint him to be chairman of the EAC.
You designate the chairperson.
Okay.
There's a second.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ray, would you like to say something? He's now our new chairman of the EAC.
Talk about birds.
I would like to thank you very much for your vote of confidence. I will do my best, as I always try to do, and with the support of your staff, Stephanie and Sarah and everybody else, I look forward to the job.
Thank you. Thanks for willing to serve.
I just want the board to know that we did receive the, I want to call it the bird book, but we did receive that today. We have it here in our library, so-
Thank you.
-for your contribution to that as well.
The bird book Mr. Hendricks put together. So- [crosstalk]
And many other things.
We have a request to waive fees for the VIA Designer House. It's been presented, it fits within our policy. Is there a motion to approve?
For approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? The waiver is for $200 for the Designer House fundraiser. Is that correct?
Yes.
A total of 200, and I see Mrs. Cunningham is here, and let me, you have a question before I call the motion?
But you answered the question.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Okay, reports from the solicitor.
I have left a report that we won't discuss later in the agenda.
Chief?
I have three traffic-related items I'd like to address the board. The first is related to a traffic coming project that the Doylestown Borough had forwarded to us regarding North Street, and they requested that we had posted our portion of North Street, no parking, so that they can add some parking. Just to give you an update where that's at, there's been some correspondence going back and forth between the township and the borough and the two traffic engineering companies. At this point, the Traffic Advisory Committee at our last meeting, what was it, February 13th, basically voted to agree to abide by Panoni's recommendation. At this point, Panoni wants to set up another meeting between us and the borough to further discuss it because there's some drainage issues that haven't been decided, as well as the roadway whiffs.
Okay.
So that's where that one's at. The second one is, again, this was brought up at the February 13th Traffic Advisory Committee, and it's related to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's study that they produced and put out on January 13th, related to the 611 corridor. The committees, the Traffic Advisory Committees has discussed a number of times trying to get a dedicated left turn lane northbound 611 at Edison-Furlong Road, particularly back in March of 2011, again in January 2012. Pendot historically has told us it doesn't meet the warrants. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's pamphlet that they provided is basically 50-some pages, addresses that and also recommends that that be there. With that being said, I would like to be able to address Panoni and Pendot, send letters to them requesting that this be acted upon.
Consensus of the board on that one?
Absolutely. With that, if it is warranted, there could be budget issues down the road as far as installation and maintenance of the traffic signal. I'd like to move forward with that because this has been on the books for a couple of years now.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Well, I don't know.
Do we have any motion?
Do we have a consensus?
No, I didn't know.
Well, we're good.
We're good.
Thank you.
The third item is also related to the 611 corridor. Corporal Becker, one of my traffic guys that does all our speed timing statistics for us, brought to my attention that since January of 2010 to the present, there's been 22 reportable traffic accidents at 611 and either New Britton Road and 611 and Salomon Road. 22 accidents, 19 of which are reportable. And reportable is either accident with injuries or vehicles need to be towed due to the level of damage. Again, I'd like to make contact with Panoni and Pendot to study these two intersections to see if we can, what type of safety measures we can take.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a bad-
We're all in agreement.
That's a bad area.
You got it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Township engineer, there's a proposal here from you with regard to the engineering services that you will provide for mapping out and engineering the sensory trail.
That is correct.
We have, you've all received and seen the proposal? Is there any, are there any questions about the proposal? For $15,000 to do the engineering, the $7,000 of it is the first phase, which will be released if approved. Do you have any-
We do have a $10,000 grant that we receive from foundations for this, so we would use that to cover that expense, to provide us the survey and the base map.
Does anyone understand what we're doing here?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. All, is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mario, you're good to go.
Thank you.
It's going to be an awesome project, the sensory trail in Central Park, so stand by. Okay. Thought I was getting yelled at back there. Request for training, manager.
Yes, we have a request from Karen Sweeney to attend the 2013 Annual Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Society Conference, and that would include an overnight stay in Hershey. And I would recommend, we've sent her in the past, and recommend that she attend this year as well, provides her with her continuing education requirements.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
For the board's edification, especially you and you guys, we approve overnight conference and trainings rather than just have them done without approval, so that's why we, these come to us. Chief, do you need to go?
What's that?
It's also blue lights going flashing out there.
We'll call.
Okay.
The other thing I have is a continued update on the Pool's Corner, following up on Mr. Paternostro's request. We did communicate with Doylestown Borough, which I reported at last meeting, and we've now received response from Buck and Ham Township. They've had no comments directed to them regarding the park and ride Trailhead Lot, and unless there's any proposed changes from the borough, which there were not, or the township, they're fine with the way Pendot has it laid out at this point in time. And as you know, the Bike Hike Committee recommended that that park and ride Trailhead Lot remain on the plans at this time.
Okay, you're up to date, Mr. Paternostro will keep you informed. Okay? Thank you. Thanks, Stephanie. Supervisors, Sean, you want to start with the Kids Castle update?
Sure. I have a, can I give you a quick Bike and Hike Committee report as well?
Sure, absolutely.
Just real quick, because most of this has to pertain to the Kids Castle. All right, thank you. Good evening. Briefly regarding our Bike and Hike Committee, they've got a lot, a lot of exciting stuff on the table, so many committees do. But right now, there's several things on the docket that if you come to the meetings, you'll get to learn more about and can participate in. They have their Destination Peace Valley, as well as the Sham and the Greenway Trail, you heard us vote on not too long ago regarding funding in that, and Tom Kelso, I know is working with our solicitor, on getting that together, to submit to come back to the Board of Supervisors in sometime in March, I think, and to then go to the county for funding of that extension of the trail system.
That funding would come from the open space dollars that have been allocated to us.
Exactly, yeah. Other, a lot of new ideas, one, I think Judy Hendrickson and some others, I don't know if she will take credit for it or not, but they're talking about some novelty like helmet cams for, maybe that can then translate onto the television channel and that, to have a route of the Bike and Hike Trail. They're passionate about it, and it could be, we've seen other things like that, it could be fun. As well as a couple of other things, but the Bucks County Bike Plan was talked about, and Andy Hamilton was there and talked about the bigger picture of the Bike and Hike System, which is the New Hope, the Doylestown Trail, also potentially the Quaker County Saucon Valley Trail in Levittown. It's just, this thing is, while we, the committee that works with us is a great committee and been at it for so long, there's all these other moving, other pieces that are moving and really neat. That said, I'm going to go to the Kids Castle topic here. The last meeting, the last several meetings, the committee, or the Board of Supervisors has looked at tentative contract that was being put together for the Friends of Kids Castle, as it, with further diligence and investigation, it was determined by the township staff and our solicitor that, in essence, the contract is not essential because the Friends are more than Friends, they're a committee, of the subcommittee of the township. And that said, there's a memorandum of understanding put together, worked out with the staff in the Kids Castle group, that still is going to be tweaked a little further. Is that right?
Yeah, we need, I need to talk to Tyler a little more too, because it's going to be changed significantly because of their, the recognition of their status.
Right. So that said, well, putting the other reviews aside, moving forward, a lot of the other questions that have been up in the air will probably be answered, you know, from insurance to other, you know, liability and other issues, since they're under the auspice of the township. In addition to that, let's see. Well, with that understanding, the memorandum I think will be reviewed and hopefully come back in the March meeting-
Should be ready for the next meeting.
-to be acted on, as well as the presentation by the board. We have some of their members here tonight. You guys want to raise your hands to get recognized, but Joe's in the back. That said, they'll be here presenting budgets and action plan at the next meeting, and we can act in the memorandum, and one, hopefully one fell swoop. In addition, let's see. In addition, there was one other issue. We've got a request in the email form regarding a waiver of signage permit. That's also been answered now. I'll explain what that was. It was their efforts by the committee to distribute signage for public awareness on the Kids Castle project, and the Save Kids Castle project, to have yards and such. While they have to, the committee, of course, has to meet with the ordinance rules, meaning to keep it on private property, can't put in public right of ways and that kind of thing. Again, since they're a committee, that issue's passed, there's no waiver necessary for the fees. Lastly, unless there's something that wants to be added, you mentioned Barbara, that the Kids Castle is having a town hall kind of forum at the Lenape Middle School, February 28th at 7:00 PM, to answer a lot of questions, dispel rumors of where's Kids Castle going, is it going to be here, is it going to be, and so on. It should be a great event. We expect a big turnout, but this, I'll take this time on their behalf to formally invite the whole board and the staff, the township and the public to that meeting, February 28th, 7:00 PM. Is that, Joe, you have a question?
Where?
Lenape. All right.
Anyone from the-
Castle Committee.
Okay, do you want to go to the microphone? Don Byers?
Yes, my name's Don Byers. Hello.
Hello.
I'm still here. Still acting as the strategic advisor for the project. I do want to recognize some of the people here tonight who are working really hard on this project. Two are new faces to the township, to these committees. We have Amy Price, who is our fundraising coordinator. That's a big task ahead of her, by the way, so we want to be really nice to Amy. And Steve Verneek is our security coordinator. He's going to help Chief, hopefully, work with you and the staff. We would like to start to talk about possibly creating like a night, we're calling it the Night Watch Committee, K-A-K-N-I-G-H-T, you know, to kind of do some, some kind of safety precautions to prevent some vandalism when things are happening. So Steve will be talking about that, hopefully, at some upcoming point in time. And Joe Salvati is our public relations coordinator. So I just want to recognize those people who are working so hard to make this a reality. And on behalf of them, I want to ask a question on a little, I just, I just want to clarify with the memorandum of understanding that it's going to change significantly, and I'm just wondering if you could indicate to me the areas which it will change so that I can set direction for the committee as needed for future meetings.
How about if I let you know later on this week, early next week?
Well, okay. My only hesitation or question is if we are going to be holding a public meeting, having a town hall meeting, I want to make sure things that we're discussing aren't going to be in conflict with what this memorandum of understanding would possibly be.
I guess I don't know what you're going to be discussing, so it would be hard. If you can, with Stephanie, we can coordinate a conference call tomorrow, maybe?
That would be helpful, I think, just so that we're all on the same page, so that I didn't do anything. So that we're not-
That's going to be in the memorandum, no.
Broke a computer, put that on the, Amy, you gotta raise more money. So, yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're clear, and Steph, we could talk about that, those things, so that we're not embarrassing the township in any way, or us in any way, if we are making any announcements or making any decisions at this town hall meeting that would be in conflict with this potential memorandum of understanding.
We'll have a conference call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for coming. All right, Sean, you done with your?
That's all I got.
Tom, you have anything?
Yes, I have one thing. This past Wednesday, which was the 13th of February, I met with Central Bucks Ambulance, which I am a liaison for the township, and we have a group of various representatives from municipalities around this area which Central Bucks Ambulance covers, and there was some questions that were raised, basically for support in regards to Act 179, which is an act which is in Harrisburg right now, to help basically assist ambulances throughout the municipalities or throughout the state of Pennsylvania and the municipalities, with the municipalities, and they're asking for our support to do this. And I said I would do that, yes, to talk with our PIZAC group, which is Pennsylvania Association of Township Officials, because they do lobby Harrisburg quite heavily when there's bills to be passed and so forth. And also, there was questions about the lower end of Doylestown Township, which has been covered by Warrington Ambulance for quite a few years, and Warrington Ambulance is going to be now part of Warrington Township, so we've asked them to, if they would cover that section for us, which was always covered by Warrington, and they agreed to do this. So there's some of the things that we have been working on, and some came to fruition. I don't think you're going to notice any major change in, from Central Bucks Ambulance to Warrington Ambulance, but also the fire company of Warrington is going to be taken over by Warrington Township, which does change that too. And we haven't really had a sit-down with Doylestown Fire Company yet to see if they would also back that up, but that's another issue we want to talk about in the, in the future. So there's just some things that were happening.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you have anything?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Rick?
Yes, I had one thing. We had a lot of great meetings in the last couple of weeks, and I always leave the meetings enthusiastic, because every one of them's got their individuality, but there's always a level of excitement and enthusiasm. And last meeting at the board, Barbara mentioned about dogs being off-leash and all the problems and the chief getting involved. Went to one of the meetings last week, we were talking about we're Birdtown USA, and I'm glad Ray's here because he can speak in better terms than I can, if the chair allows. But I found out that even though we're Birdtown USA trying to increase the population, that we're losing birds, and it's because of off-leash dogs that are disturbing the area, so that we've actually lost some species. And if the chair would permit, I'd like to concede my two minutes to Ray to explain it in English, because I'm not ornithologist, I am ornithologically-
Challenged?
Challenged, thank you.
Ray, yes, please.
Thank you for bringing it up. The reference material that you spoke about just a minute ago is a breeding bird atlas that shows what has happened in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, down to the county level, and then down to the township level. Besides the botanist I wear a hat as an ornithologist, so I've been keeping records and journals for over 20 years, and a lot of sections in the park, I've noticed over 20 years, they decline, especially on ground nesting birds, specifically woodcock, ovenbird, woodthrush, some very interesting colorful species. And the reason is, I've, and I've seen it happen, is that the dog owners, and no problem with dogs, like them, but just when they get into the environment and they're let go, they're going to run, and they are going to, you know, find nests or find young birds, and they're, they're done. So with your consideration, I certainly would like to suggest the sensitivity areas that are minimal, and in addition, to try to preserve with the new trails going in and the trail connecting, the new development on Lower State Road, there's some critical habitat in there, which I hope we can look forward and keep a tight rein on, on the loose dogs. I'm very happy since I have now ID, and I ask people when I see them, and I usually give, you know, a handshake to say thank you for keeping your dog in the lead, and also to talk to people who don't why it's important to do it. So I appreciate your support. I hope that's two minutes.
That was excellent.
Thank you, Ray. Any else, Rick?
No, that's it.
Oh, thanks. Taking nominations for the Unsung Hero Award, I see our, one of our recipients of this, of the Hero Award is in the room. So the award goes to a township resident who contributes to his or her, to his community, her community, without recognition, without reward, not to pad her resume, but does selfishly without being noticed in any other regard. So if you know of such a person, send me an email or send Stephanie an email, and we will consider. So if, I know you know people, so, anyone, everyone deserves recognition even though they may not want it. The other thing is Local Government Week is April 15th, that week, and Doylestown Township loves to participate in local government. We're planning some- We're planning some pretty much, pretty exciting projects to work with the Central Bucks School District. On the next week, we are meeting 3 o'clock here, the Bucks County Bar Association, Central Bucks School District, Curriculum Advisor.
CB Cares.
CB Cares, Educational Foundation, Doylestown Township, and we're going to invite Doylestown Borough to see what programs and projects we can put together for our middle school students in Central Bucks about civics and about local government and their community, and fun things. So we're going to get together and have that discussion, anyone's welcome to send me an email, or Stephanie an email, ideas, and also attend that meeting. That's next Wednesday here, on the 27th at 3 o'clock. That's Ernie.
Yeah, I.
Ernie, Ernie. Thank you.
Eric Bash, 15 Wilkes High Road. When I was teaching at CB East, what I would do on this week is bring students here to the township meeting, and I remember one that I came to when they were working with the project up near the shrine, and the builders were in, and they'd been to court and everything else, and I had about six or eight students in the back, and they were deciding whether or not to just do like half of the project, and the board was, like they were, have to do it all, and Connie, who was the chairman, because his father was involved with it, came back and sat with the students, and one of the students stood up and said, economically, hard times, I think you ought to let them just try that half. And Joe Connie said to me, he said, they have to do that, and that's the way the board went. So I think right now that the younger people really are paying attention in the schools, be it high school or junior high. So, you know, what you might want to do is, as you set that up with the schools, is maybe try to have students come from the intermediate schools or the high schools to the township meeting.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have, let's go back to the agenda. New business, amendments to the Nationwide Participation Agreement?
This is for the VIBA that we have for the uniform and non-uniformed employees, they are making a change in the trustee from Bank of America to Nationwide, so recommend that the board sign the paperwork so we can send it back and.
Is there a motion to approve this amendment, these amendments? Motion to approve.
The amendments to Nationwide Participation Agreement.
Thank you. There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Treasurers' Report, from February 19, 2013, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the bills list for February 19, 2013, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next meeting is March 5th, 2013, and Kids Castle Town Hall Meeting, February 28th, next Thursday, 7:00 PM, Lenape Middle School. No other business, we're adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.